All right. Recall the meeting to order and the rules of conduct for hybrid virtual meeting. This meeting will be held both in person and virtual. This session is being both video and audio recorded. Board members and staff who are joining virtually will generally remain on mute except when speaking or voting and will generally be keeping videos themselves on throughout the meeting. If a member of the public joining virtually creates an audio or video disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of staff or the first selection. For public input before the meeting, please email your comments at publicinput@columbiact.org within 24 hours before the meeting. If attending virtually, public comments during the meeting can be submitted through the chat feature. In or wave your hand and request your mic to be unmuted. Please include in both methods your name and address. Now I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next is the approval of the agenda. I make a motion to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Can we approve the minutes of February 1st, 2022? I make a motion to approve the minutes of February 1st, 2022. Any discussion? All those in favor? And the minutes of February 8th. I make a motion to approve the minutes of February 8th, 2022. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any audience of citizens?
We check chat. Nothing in the chat. I don't see any hands up and we did not receive anything on public. So there at this moment are not any. Audience is.
To all business?
Yes, so what we'll do is you have Beth Lance here and she'll give a brief outline of the operating capital. And she's mainly here to answer any questions.
So she's not going to sue us?
Not what?
Sue us.
No, Beth Lance up in the top corner.
Yes.
Okay.
Hello.
Hi, Beth.
Hi, Beth.
So basically, both my operating budgets for Public Works as well as the transfer station is staying pretty similar to last year. There aren't really any changes other than a few things were moved out of the Public Works budget and moved into the Park and Rec budget because it was more overseen by Mark Volz. So that's really the only changes. Everything else is staying the same. So unless you have questions on the operating budget specifically, I could answer those.
It's probably your biggest increase is the waste contract. It's a contractual dollar amount of really waste.
Correct, a 4% increase every year.
And we'll probably have a fuel increase, but we definitely don't have fuel increases.
That's in our line.
How much it'll hit, not just Beth's budget, that is the biggest fuel user, but everybody else.
So the waste was those professional tech lines of the really waste?
Yes. And that was, I think. Right, what was that? Was that the five? No, it's a 5,938 under Waste Disposal Services. It's almost $6,000.
Okay. So even though the new company bottomed out, it's just they haven't increased it tremendously just this.
Well, we're lucky. We're lucky we're still under contract.
Oh, that's fun.
It could.
It could depending on how you negotiate.
Yes.
Yeah, our contract is good until 2024, so.
Any more questions on the operating?
No.
Okay, so the capital, we can start with road resurfacing. There's three components to that. Every year we have to.
Just a minute. If you go into the back of your budget, you can see each capital item on these pages. Make it easier to follow along. It's behind the foldouts. Or you can look at the fallout and drop down the lines that were too. So keep going. There you go. So the first one is road resurfacing. All right, Beth, sorry to interrupt.
That's okay, so there's three items on that. The drainage and crack sealing is an item we do every year. We increased it slightly to cover the crack sealing at the firehouse. The painting of the yellow lines, that's an annual item and that's staying the same. The proposed project is the Whitney Avenue or Whitney Road, the drainage improvements. Basically, from Route 6 to the top of the hill at Whitney, we're losing the side of the road because of erosion. So those proposed changes is installation of drainage and also the repaving of partial where we disturb the road. Any questions or should I just?
Just keep going. If anybody has a question, you can speak up.
The Hennequin Road drainage capital is just a carryover from previous years. We're still working on making the necessary improvements to that. So that's nothing new, it's just a carryover. Erdoney Road, again, it's a funding that's in place and is just getting carried forward for when the project's complete. The box culvert on Hunt Road that was split up into funding over multiple years. So this is the last installment. And hopefully we'll begin construction this fall on that project.
If we get the permits.
Right. That's the thing that it's in the process of being revised, so it keeps pushing off construction on that.
They're the ones who told us that we needed to have it.
Well, the problem is that culvert touches the state property, which is the dam outflow. Because it touches it.
They're the ones who told us we needed to do it after they finished the dam project. Oh, you weren't there. So they're in the middle of the dam project and they're the ones who told us we needed to work on the culvert after they were just finishing. Instead of including it as part.
So the culvert, that's, is that that?
That's the big U-shaped piece of cement that the road goes over. Where the outflow from the dam goes under on road.
Okay.
So right opposite the dam.
Okay.
That's, I guess.
It's a wish there.
Yeah, it's a great. Very frustrating because it's a waste of money. It's a waste of time.
Under analysis, the culvert does.
Well, I'm sure because they should have noticed that and now it's inspecting the dam.
So it's our responsibility because it's done.
It's on our way.
Right, right, makes sense.
Okay, Beth, we're good.
Sorry. Need a disc.
Next is preliminary cost and design estimates. That's just a $10,000 placeholder for any engineering fees we encounter during the year. And the next one is the capital equipment. So I propose that we replace our 1999 dump truck.
Reason you would skip over rec area, that's not her budget.
Right. The town, I think it's worth that.
You get, switch all the way to. Okay, go ahead, Beth.
Can I ask a question on the engineering? Do we usually spend about $10,000 a year for engineering?
It depends on the year. So last year we had 17,000, so we didn't fund it last year. So this year they started using it, so the thought is to add more. So if it looks like projecting we're going to have enough, then that's what we need to reduce that.
With all the projects we're analyzing. All right, so Beth was just about to tell us about replacing 1999 dump truck.
Right, that's one of the larger six-wheel dump trucks that we plow with. At this time, we really need to replace it just because of the age and the, we could have failure at any time. And then we're also proposing to replace one of the zero-turn mowers up at rec park.
Okay.
That's an old dump truck.
Yes, it's in these, we won't give it up.
Yeah, we're lucky it's still.
Keep it alive.
Oh, good. Must be a good dump truck.
We got guys to get attached.
Or a good driver who knows how to babysit.
Old trucks.
Okay, Beth, transfer station.
That's the next one because I have the bridge on Hop River, or is that?
Okay, whichever one you want. Bridge is fine.
Bridge on Hop River, it's the final installment on our portion, Columbia's portion. We're sharing that with Coventry. Again, this bridge is scheduled to be start construction this season, so I believe this spring.
Has not gone up to bid yet, so those numbers could change. This is a federal bridge program with federal, feds are paying 80%.
Oh, so they'll pay 80% of this or?
No, 80% of the total bridge.
But we still have.
We're estimating these as our portion, as we share. We do, we do a, our portion is 30.44% of the 20% of the cost of the bridge. Okay, Beth.
Transfer station.
Hazardous tree removal, we're keeping the amount at $100,000. We're really trying to remove all the dead ash tree in our right of ways, so we're working on it, but there's just so many and each year they continue to deteriorate. So we're removing those as quick as we can.
There's actually hope on that. They found four parasites in the releasing.
Good.
So that may go down in the future, probably not this year.
Probably, that'd be nice.
So they're actually removing trees and not just cutting limbs?
No. Ashes are.
Only ever soars does, okay.
These trees are gone. They will fall eventually.
Ever soars is one of them too.
Yes.
They are, they're just dead. Sorry, Beth.
It's okay. The next one is a proposed gate repair at the dam. The gate that we opened to release the water from the dam we had inspected. There's heavy corrosion on the gate and it slightly leaks, so it's something that we need to replace.
Is that based on an estimate or is that just a guess?
No, that's based on an estimate. The company that did the inspection gave me a price quote. They said it could change slightly just because the cost of material with the current economy, it could go up, but it also could go down if the price of steel changes.
We got that in at $55,000.
But if we were to replace it now, that's what it would be. And then the last one is the transfer station. Basically, we're going to keep $10,000 in the in the proposed capital and that's to address any safety issues that arise in repairing the walls or any pavement or anything like that that comes up. And that's it unless anyone has questions.
Beth, why don't you address another item that we're going to propose? Not come out of the capital budget, but kind of either general fund or ARPA, which is the annex. Want to explain what the annex.
Well, that would be facilities, he would, Jason would.
But I meant from your side, why is it important?
From my side, basically, the office situation at the existing Public Works garage really isn't conducive for an office setting. It also, the building is aged, a lot of our equipment is stored outside as opposed to inside. So a lot of the maintenance is going on, the bathrooms are not adequate to today's standards, the rec room. It would really be nice to have an annex for my offices at the garage with the crew, that there could be a break room that we could hold training in and just have a better situation for bathrooms and during storms, somewhere where the crew could have coffee or whatever. It's just the garage is pretty rundown at this point.
So right now, the one room that's a bathroom with one toilet has a sink and all their clothing is stored in there. So it's it's a bathroom that you would have designed 40 years ago.
So, so Mark, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
This is Jason. Hi, if you want to talk about it now, but from a standpoint of looking at that building, well, the bathroom is just not even a bathroom. It's a bathroom mechanical room. It's kind of, it's the locker room all at once. It's kind of kind of not right, just from a standpoint of humanity. It's everything's in one room in that sense. As far as office and break room facilities, there are none to be really blunt about it. They don't have, there is an office towards the front, but there's no, there's, there are no break room facilities, no no areas to meet in a professional way where people could sit down and and look at a board or look at a computer screen or anything to talk about the workload or to do training or to do anything. The facility is a garage, which is fine. As a garage, it functions as a garage. But it is not really a professional facility for trying to do any other work or for trying to do training or having Beth or even a foreman do any work in an office environment. And it also, it's rough on the, as far as the creature comforts for breaks. Sometimes these guys are in for 18, even 20 hours straight. And there's no place other than to sit in the truck with the truck running to be. So this project, I envision it and we're working with anchor engineering to come up with a site plan so that we don't limit ourselves and cause a problem in the future where we put a building where we don't want it. So I'm working with them on the site plan for it already. But the project, the way I look at it is to try to do it in the least costly manner. So probably a modular building, basically a modular ranch house type style where we get an office, a conference room, a couple bathrooms, one larger, one that would be more like a single-use bathroom so that if we have female employees in the future, the single use could be the female bathroom and then one that's more like a locker room that would be the, would be the male bathroom if we were to have female employees in the building in the future. And then a break room. So not a large facility, not extravagant in any way, but something that is finished, not a garage and that actually has bathroom and the ability that, you know, if you get covered in something that you shouldn't get covered in, how are you showering and all the safety factors that go into that? So trying to address all those issues all in one project.
Could the American Rescue money take care of that?
That's the plan. And Jason, we're also looking at a in the future, this will be part of discussion with Board Selective Buy Act, but a six-bay garage, you want to address that?
So we're looking at six bays. Technically, I think we only need about four at the current moment. But if we're going to invest in it and build something, building six isn't going to be that much harder than building four as far as cost and site planning. But it's to get our trucks in a building so that they can be warm when the guys get there. You don't have starting trouble in the cold weather. Also protect them from theft. We've had, we've already had theft related to to cutting out catalytic converters. We could get the senior center van parked in there. It is out of the way and kind of a pain when they're running it regularly. But if we want to protect it from a particular storm or protect it from theft in any way, we'd have the space to do that. It would be a very standard storage building. And again, trying to keep the cost down, basically building a building separate from other buildings so we don't have to go through all the fire separations through any concept of putting in sprinklers or anything like that, but a standalone six-bay garage insulated with what's called, they're called bay heaters, but you know, a couple heaters that we could keep it at, you know, between 50 and 55 so we don't get gelling in the diesel and that people are comfortable when they get in there. And then we'd continue to use the current building as the mechanic building and to store more vehicles because we're only going to be able to store up to six in the in the other in the new, in the new facility. So I think that should get, again, I'm trying to project, but I would, I would project that these projects would be 20 to 30 years worth of taking care of the DPW. If things in 20 years get a lot bigger, which my personal opinion, Connecticut's not going to get that bigger, that much bigger. But if they were, then maybe you'd need more. But I think a six-bay garage would house our equipment in a good way and provide for a small amount of expansion, one to two trucks expansion in the future.
I want the crack facility.
Is there a room for the senior van to be housed in the old firehouse facility or is that all taken up in the workshop at this point?
No, so the old firehouse has two, has two bays that are very short. They couldn't fit that van anyway. But the two bays are taken up by the facilities truck and the school facilities truck. So they're both full and also too short. So you would need to do work in order to try to fit it in there anyway. There's a bay empty at the fire station, but that bay gets taken up by, you know, every once in a while, they pull something into that bay and work on it or something like that. There is one empty bay at the actual fire department. But it does get limited use. I'm not sure that they would appreciate having it taken up by the senior van.
I don't think you really can anyway. Because it's separate entity.
Right, 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 yeah, that's one of those things, right.
And Jason, do you want to explain your HVAC fund? Just, we have some new, a new member here, Chris Lance. Just explain how we're using that fund to maintain our HVAC and keep a fund for repairs.
Yeah, so when I got here a little over a year ago, there was no fund that actually carries over year to year. So there was only operating budget for HVAC repairs or for any major repairs actually. But and there was money set aside, $50,000 to do a senior center complete replacement of the senior center HVAC. And then there was another, I want to say close to $20,000 for work to the fire department's HVAC. But neither one of those appeared to be immediately in danger of failing. And it was just choosing to do those because of age, which is not a bad plan, but not necessarily the best plan if you're trying to do it at a, on a budget. So instead of having everything try to run out of a very strict budget where it said senior center HVAC, we have an HVAC fund so that if a catastrophic if there's a catastrophic damage to a particular building system, instead of having to waste $3,000 that we may be able to afford out of the operating budget to limp it along, we could actually, at that point, say, this is catastrophic. Let's just do the replacement that costs $15,000. And so we replace things as they break versus replacing things because they're old. So we have the money already set aside in a fund. And the idea going forward is to basically replenish it each year. So if we spend 20 to replace something, then we replenish it with 20. And just keep that fund balance there so it's never a large hit per year to the budget. And we also don't replace things that don't need replacing. So for instance, this, in our current year, we ended up having to replace an actual replacement, not a small repair, an actual replacement of a a significant piece of the library's HVAC. And that, that's a fairly new building, we would never have planned for that. But as of yet, and I will knock on wood right now, we haven't needed to replace any large piece of the senior center's HVAC. And so the idea behind the HVAC fund is to fund the large replacement projects, the operating thing, so we have a service call for $375 for to repair a little tiny thing, that still comes from operating. But if we're going to actually repair capital equipment that I expect is what I would call a seven-year item, a seven-year capital equipment, so coming from private industry, we call things by years based on the amount of time you can. based on that, the amount of time you can depreciate them, uh, for taxes. So if we're going to replace something that has an ex- expected life frame of seven years or more, then we would take that out of the HVAC fund, uh, do that replacement there. And then at the end of the year, uh, analyze that and, and, um, replenish the fund for the, for the coming year for those same exact costs.
Now, do you have a max that you want in there? Let's say if you don't spend the 20,000, do you need, do you, is your plan to put another 20,000 next year? Or is there a max that you want in there?
I think, I think, I think 50 to 70,000. If we're planning on doing a project out of it, um, for instance, this coming year, uh, we're going to plan on doing an actual project. We already plan it, uh, we're already planning it for the Murphy House. Uh, so 70 is better because we actually are planning to take, um, we have a plan that we're going to need, uh, close to 20 for a project. Um, in, in the future, you could possibly let it dwindle down to 50. Uh, but I would leave 50 as a, as a, as a guide or as a, as a general number that we want to keep that balance at. Because if you have two catastrophic failures, you're going to spend 40.
Yes.
Um, you know, we have the, um, Town Hall Yeoman, Yeoman's, um, we, we have a boiler that's very old. Um, I think we're going to repair it, but, uh, there's a, there's a very old boiler at, at Yeoman's that's, that's leaking currently. Um, we're not going to do anything to it as long as it doesn't actually fail until after the heating season. But, um, you know, that, that project could be 10, $12,000 if you were to actually replace, not repair. And, um, replacing, well, you saw the project, we're doing it out of ARPA, but, uh, you saw the project at the fire safety complex to, to replace. And that's only a portion, that's only the, uh, the hall, the, the, the main like dining hall area. Uh, that was almost $20,000. I think it was 17,000 something, uh, to replace the equipment for that building. So, and that's only a portion of the building. So I would recommend never going below 50. Uh, currently I'd say 70 just because we're, we have some plans, um, to take care of some things out of it. And also because we haven't replaced everything yet and there are a lot of aged, um, or a lot of aging equipment in the buildings. And as we, as we replace them, uh, you could probably consider lowering that number to 50 as a, as a guide.
Okay, please, thanks. Any other, anything else on facilities?
Just to clarify, so that 1999 dump truck, that's the same dump truck that's potentially going to the town meeting that will be covered by rescue funds?
Yes.
Yes. So then that will eventually come out of the.
Come out of here.
Yeah.
And help reduce fuel roll.
Yep. So, anything else?
Uh, facilities, Jason, did you have anything on the operating side you need to update the board on?
On the operating side, um, I mean, we're doing, we're doing a little bit more work in-house. So I have a slight increase there. You'll see that, uh, well, it's as a percentage, it's a, it's, you know, not slight, I guess. But, uh, um, an increase on the, um, on the materials because, uh, if we're not going to sub things out and we do things ourselves, it's, it shows up in that line item.
So that's your general supply?
Very talented. I'm sorry.
That's your general supplies out of your facilities maintenance budget? We've got the box.
Yeah, it's the, uh, it's line, uh, 300.
300, yeah, it increases $1,700.
General supplies. Um, so I have a, I have a decent increase in there, um, you know, as a percentage. Uh, we have an incredibly talented person working in, in building maintenance right now. And so when we try to do something, I try to keep it in-house. Uh, I try to guide Dan, uh, his name's Dan. Um, I try to guide him a little bit on the, on the technical aspects and he runs with it and he can get it done. And I'm feeling very comfortable, uh, not calling, uh, subcontractors, uh, for, for every little thing that's going on. And that means that we're going to be, the money's going to come from that budget. Uh, the other, the other budget that is going up is the subcontractor budget. And, uh, to an extent, that is because it's all just gotten more expensive. Um, every time we buy something, it's, uh, it's higher.
Can we call that?
Materials are higher, the, the subcontract costs are higher. It's, uh, it, construction's been higher. And, and you'll see, um, if you haven't already talked about it, um, you'll see on the, um, building revenue side, um, and, and the tax, the grand list side, that, uh, you know, there's been a ton of building going on, a lot of, uh, lot of activity in general. And, um, and that's causing the prices to spike to a degree. There, there's other reasons for it too, but, um, you know, there's just a lot going on. So unfortunately, some things are more expensive. We're, we're going through with the rec park projects that are, that are fine. Uh, we're in good shape. But even as we looked at those, uh, you know, from the time we talked about them six months ago-ish till now, when they're starting to get built, first, uh, delivery of material was today for the, for the framing. Uh, plywood prices have gone all over the place. They went up, they went down, they're back up. Um, it's a very, uh, difficult time in the construction industry.
Prices are fluctuating a lot. Anything else on, I mean, you go to, um, the other budget items?
And I think are we done with, uh, both that and Jason's?
I think I had one, I think I had, well, I had one other thing. I think you probably consider it, um, rec, but, uh, we were looking at the, uh, tennis court and the pickleball court. I didn't know if you wanted me to talk about those at all.
Sure.
Sure. Go ahead, Jason.
Yeah, it's always good to.
So the, uh, tennis court has, um, cracks in it that are too large, too wide, uh, to try to do some crack sealing, um, to, um, I, I believe in crack sealing, anything and everything, uh, every, every fall before there's, uh, freeze thaw cycles. Um, unfortunately, the tennis courts have gone far too many years without that. And the cracks are too wide to do crack sealing to try to extend its life expectancy. And so the tennis court is going to continue to degrade until we actually replace it. Uh, so when we replace it is up to you guys, obviously, but I don't think there's much we can do from a maintenance standpoint to, um, extend its lifespan. Uh, and then there was a need and that's, that'll be more from Mark Bolza, but there was a need for a second pickleball court because it gets used a lot. Honestly, I've been up there a ton and it's constantly being used. I've seen it used at 35 degrees out and people are out there playing pickleball. But, uh, so, um, that one, you know, that's obviously new. But as far as the tennis court, uh, there's not a lot we can do to, uh, try to extend its lifespan. It's going to continue to degrade and be, um, less flat. Um, not easy to play tennis on when, when you start having everything, uh, you know, buckle, uh, and, and, and eventually it'll become a, um, a, a safety hazard from, from a running standpoint, uh, where people can roll their ankles and et cetera. So, uh, definitely keep it on the radar.
For the court, the tennis, 40 for the pickleball. But thank you.
You're welcome.
So there's no, nothing else? So, and, and nothing else, Jason?
Uh, that's it, that I had flagged from, from my standpoint unless you guys have something else.
Then we can go on to the other budget items.
Yes. All right, and Beth, if I need you at the end of the meeting, I'll, I'll call you. But I think you're probably good. So. What do you want to do next? Beth, do you want to, um, go through, outside the hall? Do you want to, um, work through these worksheets?
Some of these big worksheets.
So it might as well start with capital where we get extended. Is there any questions on anything else in the capital budget? And we would look for 2022, 23 budget appropriations to see the total budget request of 965,000, $735. Now, Beth?
That does include looking at the detail from the fire department. Um, they want to start funding replacement on vehicles and there's equipment that they're trying to just spread out their costs and stuff. So, um, details on that, it's not in the sheet. So that's the next spreadsheet.
So we went over the fire department last week. Did that make sense? It's broken down into both vehicles and capital equipment.
Yeah.
And then what we just got over is all the big sightings in the capital budget. Listed there. And then probably the best thing to focus on, Beth, you want to go through your American Rescue Plan general fund? So this is the budget we're looking at right now.
So there's some, some of the items. The first column is a list of all the American Rescue Plan, um, projects that we've got a capital and we're paying with the American Rescue Fund. So the top left, you'll see this is American beginning balance. So we, last June got 795,000 and change. So then you go down that column, you see all the projects that have been approved. Um, and then there's a balance at the bottom. We are able to earn interest on that money. So, um, we got a lot of 377 so far. So.
Case for a couple of streetlights.
Yeah. So, um, so, and this also includes in there, there's a couple of, um, projects that the quotes came in a little higher than we budgeted. So that's going to be coming up, up to increase the allocation. Um, but I included in here just so we have a more accurate number. Um, because the radios that were ordered from the town and the, and the, um, fire department came in through a little more. So I want to make sure that it's in here now, even though we haven't approved it yet. So that'll be coming up probably in the next, sort of, meeting, I guess. Um, the next column is listing a bunch of the projects. One of them is the annex building of, of projects that we believe qualify for the American Relief Fund. And, um, and so we want to move forward in the next couple of weeks, get them going, going for the public hearing and all that. We'll be talking about that. So these are just suggested projects that we would like to use the next bunch, next funding. So some, we only have a certain amount right now, 323, but this will also apply to the rest, the other half, which is coming in June. Another 795,000 is supposed to come in June. So you'll see at the bottom, if everything gets approved, we'll still have $12,000 to figure out what we want to do. Now, we do have until 2024 to basically purchase, order them or pay for them. But we have to make sure we use up the money by, I think, probably within a year after that. So, um, and based on our knowledge of what we, with the US Treasury, these should all qualify American relief funds. The next column has to do with, um, suggestions that we use, go right to the general fund and not including capital. And fire that includes the last payment for the rescue truck that's on order for the fire department. On the rescue truck, um, since we paid 90%, it's currently earning interest on that money and we'll get that back. Or use it as a credit towards the final payment. Plus they're selling the old truck. And we're hoping in the two, it'll cover the rest of that balance. If not, we may have to go to the general fund for that truck. And so that's why it's in that list. And then the rest are just some other items that we're suggesting we take care of. Um, they're just requests, not necessarily they've been put in the budget, but they're requests that we received to just go ahead and maybe use the general fund for them. So that's a discussion point going forward. And then the next, five columns, what's currently in the capital plan on the other page documents? I have a column showing what's, some of these products are already funded. And then we do have a steep grant in here too. Um, there's something else. Oh, yeah. And then just so you know, two of the items in the potential is the, um, self-contained breathing apparatuses and the forage vehicle. The fire department have, has put in, um, for grant funding, federal grant funding. We may not know until the fall if they receive any of that money. There's like four, I guess, all allocations or awards they give out for different time periods. So until we know whether we're getting or not, it's kind of a potential American relief funds. If we get it, then it'll get removed. Um, if we don't get it, then we'll have to discuss general fund or what we need to do with those.
Can we get a letter from the court?
Uh, no, she said she would have it done within the week.
Okay, great.
I remember at the last meeting, they were talking about that internet service. And I know that that's not something we can buy. It has to be.
Well, that's broadband.
Broadband.
What CCM is doing is we're going ahead and funding a broadband test statewide. We're going to hire a company that will actually allow people to dial in and record exactly what span speed they're getting in the home. And they can do it statewide and that'll give us a much better picture of where we have problems in the state.
Yeah.
Because it's hard to fix an issue if you're guessing. And if you try to hire a company to do a town by town, they'll all have different methodology of speed testing. So that, that's in the works and they're going to try to see if.
Because when we have our meeting, they're going to, that's going to come up again. So that's good.
But we're also having two upgrades on our cell towers.
Oh, good.
They cut out two, two cell towers that are both.
Where are, where are those cell towers?
Well, one is off the 66, um, heading towards Hebron.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's.
It's right by the farms.
Yes.
Right by the, there's a little pond.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's an old one. And then the other one, I forget the road it's on.
That's okay. That was that one.
That was that one. It was that way. I thought there were another ones.
Should be at the other side of town.
No.
It should be on a hill.
Macro or something. Oh, but it is.
Just good to know where they are. So maybe that'll help.
Right, that could help.
Yeah.
Yes, there are ways you can go out of there and just type test it yourself. But that, that dial in and kind of get it recorded. There are areas in town that are show, that people can't get out.
The process to do this, that I think, I think people understand that.
So who's going to actually take for that?
I think CCM is covering it for all the towns.
Yeah, because I was a pusher with the article mine was to use broadband enhancements. But they're going to cover it, that's why.
Yeah.
And then I'm going to ask for the township, you know?
Any, uh, any questions on the budget items? Anything new business? First is Deputy, first selectman.
Steve wants to know if there's any volunteers to use that.
She hasn't time. She's retired.
You want to make a motion, Lisa?
I'm going to re- approve Judy as deputy, first, deputy selectman, first selectman?
Deputy, deputy selectman.
Yeah.
Stephen is still first.
Right.
Right, so it'd be deputy selectman. When Steve's out. When Stephen's out.
Uh, Stephen's right here and, you know, I think everybody's pretty well qualified. You know, it really just somebody in my absence like tonight, something like this, so. I'd like to have somebody who would like to do it.
Yeah, I don't mind doing it.
Yeah, I think Judy has the most time to be able to do it at this point. We're too, I'm just flat out, I don't know about Bill. I mean, I don't know, do we do this when Bill comes back? Do we have to do it tonight? I mean, Bill has seniority, he wanted to do it.
Stephen, did Bill tell you he was not interested?
Uh, well, four years ago I asked him and he said he was not interested. So I haven't asked him directly this time. We can certainly wait.
Let's wait, let's wait, because Bill does have the seniority. And if he wants, if he wanted, yeah, I think he should be the one to have it.
Yeah, so you won't be at the next meeting, the budget workshop, right, Stephen?
Well, this wouldn't happen.
So we'd be waiting for the March meeting then?
Yeah, so, well, the question is, we don't even know if we'll need a budget workshop next, next week, right?
Correct, we do not know that yet.
We have to have the budget to five pack by when, Mark? The week after?
Yeah, the, actually, our next budget workshop is the deadline. And then I have to get it, get it to five pack by March 1st, so.
No, 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 no.
But it's the 15th.
The 15th, you have to get it to five pack. March 1st is the next part of regular board of selectmen where you give a presentation and then the board of selectmen vote whether to pass, send it forward to five pack unless they have a change.
You're right, March 1st is our last meeting to vote on.
So or you have another meeting on the 8th, so.
March 15th.
Yeah.
Right. Well, it says TA and superintendent deliver budgets to buy pack on March 10th. That's our, and March 15th is the last.
Do we have our final numbers for health insurance?
No.
And you haven't done the fuel either?
Yeah, we started looking at the fuel.
Okay.
And right now it's at 280, pretty much. We'll probably run 285 with taxes and fees. That's pretty much the average for all of them. It is probably going to go up, so I was thinking of moving to maybe budget three out of the downward just to cover.
How about vehicle fuel?
That is the same.
Okay.
All of it's the same, so based on the price we got yesterday. The health insurance, you know, it's with the state partnership plan, so it started 8%. It may come downward, you have no guarantee, but I have to confirm the 8%. Make sure it's accurate in the budget. So and then it's just to figure out how much we put into the other, like the internal service, which probably we have some retirements or resignations, so I'm going to have to put like 20,000 in there. That's a general fund transfer anyway. And we have the dog, the animal control, which we have a number in there, but that's still kind of pending. And then just finalizing what we want in capital and whether you're going to have to take things out for American Relief Funds, which is finalized in capital. And then it's salaries and benefits that get finalized.
Yeah, we have never hear until the last minute about the insurance, about the insurance.
So this year we thought was going to be like 4%, but there was some miscommunication, so it turned out to be eight.
And that's lower than other years.
So usually we've had anywhere between 16 and 20%. Last year we left the partnership because it was turning into 23, 30%.
It's too high.
So it's, it's not a bad increase for the first round. I'm not that concerned about it. We're hoping it comes back down. So and then, you know, just deciding, I think we were coming up with a plan, right? Mark, about the employee copays, if we're going to increase it a little bit. So we have to look at the rates for that.
What are they paying now?
12%. And that's obviously a question.
Every year it goes up, you know? That just seems weird that it has, you know?
Well, that's because people go to the doctors for a fit cut finger. They go to the doctors for, and people go to the doctors.
Unfortunately, this year, awesome, just like with the the state teacher, the state or our group, whatever you might call it, it's in our area. Again, maybe it was co-related, maybe it was cancer or something, but they got hard hit again with some heavy duty claims and just impacting.
Sure, which raises the rates.
And of course, they've expanded to more members, so.
And we've also got an aging population.
Right.
But that's not all, that's just, that's us. Been quoted here in Columbia, it's just.
No, I'm just talking, everybody is aging. You know, Connecticut is an aging population.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, there's many factors involved, so importantly, you can see how things go tonight and then just keep the meeting open for next week or just hold everything until the first and then we'll present the changes then.
I mean, do you expect to have any of these numbers finalized before next week?
This, but some of this is not going to finalize till the five pack.
Right.
Forever to get like.
Usually it's March or.
We have a budget that we think will work and right now East Haddon's agreed to allow us to use their vehicles until Hebron and Columbia buy a vehicle the other.
So we're going to be going together with Hebron?
That's the plan. So Hebron has a budget, we have a budget. Andy and I have talked, we think it'll, it'll work. We're going to use the East Haddon, East Hampton employees.
I think that's smart. I think it's smart to join other towns with this stuff.
But we're keeping separate from them on facilities.
I was going to say, so we have our own dog kennel, so what? If we get a stray dog, it's here and somebody doesn't have to drive.
Right, right, it could be a pain.
Yeah.
And we've been trying not to keep animals in our kennels.
It's not code.
Right, you need to invest if you want to actually use them.
Does Hebron, Hebron must have it.
Hebron has a little facility.
I haven't looked at theirs, so that'll be part of the plan.
So the next is the Morris Charity School bid waiver and approval.
Hey, Mark?
Yes, Stephen.
So I'm going to lose you here, I'm going to get on Zoom in about three minutes, okay?
Okay, great, I'll let you in.
If I can, thanks.
Okay.
I saw that, it was what?
Yeah, that's under new business.
It was a lot less than what I thought.
Yeah, so we finally found a painter willing to scrape the school down and abate it and repaint it inside. And this doesn't include, we're still looking for a quote for a skilled person to do backs in the ceiling. The plaster, this is just paint.
So this'll, are you taking the lead down, the paint down or just in paint? Okay, that's not bad.
You're not just going to encapsulate it.
Yeah.
But we'll scrape it as much as we can.
Okay.
I thought it was something canceling it, it was let abating.
They've gotten through.
Well, it's some scraping and then painting over. So not taking it down at all.
Scrap repair, all liner.
So they're going to do the basic, I think the basic cracking, scraping what they can, but then basically you're going to encapsulate the rest of it. It's going all the way down to the wood. And so, but you can't do the crack until you, you can't paint to the crack, right?
So, so, Mark?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Jason.
So, uh, the, the painter that was finally willing to do the job, he did include one coat of primer and two coats of paint on the ceiling. He just did not include repairing the cracks on the ceiling because it is a particular skill that is hard to come by right now. But also we just had him come out last week, so we haven't found somebody yet. So we're going to continue between that, that painter and myself. We're going to continue to look for somebody who may be able to repair those plaster cracks. He will repair cracks in the, in the plaster walls, just basically by, by spackling them like we do to cracks on a, on a sheetrock wall, because it's a wall and there aren't that many. All the paint will be, any loose paint will be scraped and sanded off. Any major defects that are, that are, that look like they're more paint defects will be epoxied with a wood epoxy. But the mentality was some of the other defects that look like they're actually defects from age. So, you know, the fact that the door has a bunch of bumps in it because the kids were banging their books on the way out the door or whatever it was that caused those bumps. The idea is to not cover over every defect because that would defeat the purpose of it looking real and historical. Some of those defects are, are the result of, of it being old.
Right.
So we don't want to go crazy with, with, with especially the woodwork filling, filling in every little dent. But he will fill in some that look like they're more related to, to paint defects. So that's what we went over in our, in our conversation and he wrote it, read in his quote that he was going to fix some of those defects, but not all of them. And so we're going to get a coat of, coat of primer and two coats of of paint on every surface in the building, including the, you know, even though they're not bad, but this way the color's right, but including the cabinets in the, in the little room when you first come in. And everything will be fresh painted and there won't be peeling anything. And it'll be safe and encapsulated as far as the lead goes, but safe and preserved. And I think that, I'm hoping that's what the goal was, but that's what I was shooting for.
And Jason, you'll get a color paint, historic exterior paint swatch book to Judy and the Historical Society can advise us on what colors they want.
I'll talk to Amy.
Yeah, we'll get that.
Yeah, to pick, we have to get the, the color of the walls and the, and the woodwork picked, yes. And then the ceiling is planned, planned to be white.
All right, so we just need a motion, because we only have, we only get one better, so we need a motion to approve.
Okay, make a motion to approve the Char, Charvano, Charvano, the, the offer he made to do the work at Morris Charity School.
For $11,000.
For $11,000. All those in favor?
Aye.
Set a public hearing for a ARPA funding for March 1st, go for our next meeting. All those in favor, make a motion to set the public hearing for March 1st?
So, Mark, you're not going to be there March 1st?
No, I'm gone. So that'll have to be really handled by you and Bev.
Yeah, I think I'll be there, so that's fine. March 1st, March 1st. So let's talk, I want to, yeah, okay, so that's fine, I don't care.
Should we do it another time?
That's just before. Right, so it's, it's a, a meeting before the meeting and you really need to know.
Yes.
We need to know what we're going to be spending in our budget.
Right.
For the budget process.
Just said it, that's fine.
Okay. Okay.
We got a vote. Bye.
The text my gov.
And it's the same legal notion used in the first public hearing.
So before you get into text my gov, Mark, I think next week, because one of the things when you're going through the the large spreadsheet, you'll see there that we're projecting to spend $160,000 out of capital. And I, I hope to take a look at everything and spend what we need to, to keep the budget going forward. It may be up to 6, 7, 800,000 out of the capital to keep it still healthy because we're in a, we're way too healthy. One-time expenditures on different things, so we don't have to save for them, take them out of the budget in the next 10 years type of thing. But I will have to look at that a little bit more, sit down with Bev and Mark and take a look at it. But the plan is to spend the ARP money, use money in the general fund to take care of things that in the future would be spread out over years. And, you know, just this year, set up the mill rate to be able to cover what we need without raising taxes or very little should we have to. I didn't think we have to with such a general fund. But there's some things on there we're going to have to take care of in the future that are one-time expenditures. If we can do it now with the, the general fund, I think it will help. So.
Is the fire department, Stephen, that you've still got in the capital budget, $322,000?
For what? In the fire department? Yeah, we'll take a look at it, but there's also a couple of culverts we might be able to take care of with the general fund. I don't, I'm just throwing out ideas. I will, we looked at it today, I just didn't have the time to do it today. But Mark and I will be sitting down in the next week or two to make sure when all the numbers start coming, so we can present it to the board of selectmen and then we present it to five pack, not tell them what we want, but give it to them with a real good understanding and the vision of why we want it that way after we agree upon it. So we can get through this budget season in a smooth manner and take care of the future. So, thank you.
How much money do we have on our savings?
It's like over 20%. Yeah, it's over 100% yearly.
Got to stop seeing, right? That's a lot of money. So you're thinking taking some money out of that rather than put it in the budget. Makes sense. Um, next, text my, text my gov.
I'm going to let Jen talk about this, because this is what she's excited about. And we, we're going to give you a, a way to test it to see how other towns are using this as another form of communication. And what's driving this? And then you can evaluate and tell us if you think it could help the town or if you just want to put it on the shelf and wait for another time. But what's driving it is we're noticing that, and we really discovered this during the COVID, during the pandemic. People kept calling saying, I don't know when you're having your drive, even though they thought they'd signed up for the newsletter and for the email blast, but they'd signed up for Everbridge, so they didn't understand the difference. But what they're used to is getting texts. And Jen, why don't you explain how this would work as a text vehicle for communicating with this town?
Turn to your page, new business, you can, you'll see that there's a flyer in there. There's a number 4352654446. This is a test that you guys can do and you text that number and you can put any of those keywords, monthly newsletter, transfer station, pay taxes online, et cetera, et cetera. And, so for backup, six or seven, the other. And you can, you text that and it'll bring you to our website with information on, on those keywords. So the text.gov, my gov works two different ways. People can text the number that we put out, it's going to, it would be a 203 or 860 number. And they can, you know, we'll have a series of keywords people can check and it'll bring them to various parts of the website and give them information on what they're looking for. The other part of it is they can sign up and you'll see there's a couple of different, this is an example of, from Wolfip. And you can sign up to get particular text town, text message notifications. And that could be, you know, depending on how we set it up, it could be COVID-19, it could be transfer station, it could be, you know, weather related. So it's the same idea as the email notification, it's just by texting, so.
Now, the court was, what did it say? Implementation, setup date is 2000?
Yeah. Yep.
And for your seventy-two hundred and one fifty-two hundred, I think, so.
Yep.
Would this include the school that they wanted to pay part of hours?
I don't know, I, I.
It's a good question. I think that's a good idea.
The only problem is, so who's gonna monitor it? Who monitors it and, and could this be a can of worms?
Well, it would be our office that would monitor it.
And so we're gonna need another employee just to monitor this?
No, I don't think you would. If you set, if you set the program up correctly, it kind of works itself.
It goes right to the website, right?
It's, it's, right, so you, so you decide, you know, what you, what you would set up for keywords. Um, and it would automatically bring it to that website. It ties the way the system, the program works. It ties it up. And you could cha, you could change it. It's, there's different things that you can do. Um, but it's, it's pretty much, once you decide your keywords, it's, it'll connect directly to the website.
Right.
It'll, in that, it'll have the ability to change, you know, um, if you change your website, um, it had, the program has the ability to change to go to the right page.
So what you would have to do is make sure the website is, whatever you want to communicate is on the website, which I do anyways.
Yeah.
In, in, in setting up the keywords though, is, is that something that would have to be typed for beta or does it have logic like Boolean where, you know, if, if you type something and you didn't include COVID slash nineteen or COVID nineteen or a slash or.
Yeah, so I tried that for Wolf pit and I, it was, I did that too because it has whatever they had for COVID nineteen, I didn't put in, I don't remember if it was, I didn't put in the dash or I did put it in and it found it. And, but it'll sometime, and I also tried something else and it said, well, that's not, we can't find that keyword, but you can text help and it'll direct you to, to something else, you know, so there's a way to.
So I just put in the phone number and then in my keywords, I hit COVID nineteen, it's probably right, it'll probably be a website.
Okay. And I, I went into Wolf pits because I wanted to see like, some, something that was actually working and it, it's really kind of.
I think this is a great idea.
Does our website company have something like this?
Unfortunately, no. So I reached out to Munich Code, um, who is now part of Civic Plus. Um, because I understood that Civic Plus does something like this, but it's still, they said no, they, Munich Code, even though they've been taken over by Civic Plus, is still kind of a separate entity and they don't have that ability yet. Um, so I did put it in a request to Civic Plus to just see what um, they would come back with. Um, I talked to Laura Stone in Coventry, that's who they use and she said Civic Plus is pretty expensive.
Yes, this is something, I mean, you have to focus, please, you'd be adding to this year's budget or to next year's budget for the next two years.
So Jen, they have to sign up to receive texts from us?
Yes, um, yes, yep.
That won't be a problem. And how about um, or they can memorize the number or put it in their phone to text in, should they request or look for the keyword, right?
Right, yep.
You could say.
You can, it's also set up, you know, we could set it up too, like if somebody wants to report something, if there's a pothole or, you know, um, has that feature as well.
I think, sounds like a great, because communication is such a problem.
It's everywhere. So what happens when somebody decides they're going to be the town police and drive around and complain about this neighbor and that neighbor? My question is, is it anonymous? Do you, so can any, this is becoming a problem. So is this an anonymous thing? Do you have to register with it? Can it be anybody? I mean, what's to say we don't get a hacker who comes in and starts causing a lot of problems?
There was the security on that, so like if you need to trace a call, text, you should be able to.
Okay.
Yeah, then I, I don't have the answer.
That would be a concern.
That's a good question for novice.
That's a good question.
That's a question for this company.
Well, we will ask them what the security features are.
They kind of have some.
Okay.
So I just tried the um, boarding commission and I used spell an instead of an ampersand and it brought me to some other agency. Brand city national do this agenda. I guess we've got to get it pretty close.
Well, I think we're used to that. They know, we type in one letter off that messes it up, one number off. That's always irritating them.
Went to Mary'sville, Ohio, when I hit committee.
Now, do we need to vote, we can vote on this tonight or?
No.
Okay, I think it sounds like a good idea.
Like, to help with communication. Like, play with it, we'll do more homework, one to tell you, got a presentation.
I, I could see an issue with just somebody who has way too much time or has, uh, what they're called when you're having, you're angry at someone.
You're obsessed.
You just, there's people out there.
Oh, yeah.
Who have way too much time on their hands.
I'm looking mad at everybody responds like within seconds.
They'll email, they'll call to, so.
And there's something nice about our town, a small town. So, you know, in the end, they can call you, or fifty-five hundred people, so you get to know people and you maintain a small town kind of environment.
This, this is just another arsenal in our, our toolkit for communication.
I, I would be curious on that.
Well, security is good. It's good.
Yeah, I mean, that, I don't have an answer that I can certainly find out.
I mean, we, we just had a cyber audit recently, right? I mean, is it something that, are they still part of coming back here or they might be able to help us? Maybe answer those types of questions. Are we still on a contract for them for anything or is that?
Well, yeah, we had, it's all this, so it's the same company, so I think the question would be is find out the security of people just texting and then getting right into the website would be the same if anybody asked. Our next, we're accessing the website, so there should be enough protection that.
Can you block people so it's quite effective?
The number becoming initially the company. But now they're spooking these security, yes, they're the ones that, so. And if they are, then they'll be working with novice because they probably gonna have to get some admin rights and work with them, so.
So, you'll get some information on that, yeah.
And, and, and it goes two ways, so not when I signed up and I typed in COVID nineteen, I got linked to the website, if there's any news that changes, well, send me proactively something or do I have to ask the question and get?
You have, so it, it's, it would be two different things, so it, you know, you can ask a question and it'll bring you to our website to address that question, but if you wanted to get notifications, you would have to um, register to do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Through the.
Yeah.
It will go to Columbia, I guess, approval for Candace Tanner for repair of the dock, is there any question on that? So the um, that back approval, if there's a.
Yes, there's, I think they provide their thoughts.
It meets the guidelines.
Correct. So this first letter is the Alback approval.
So, I make a motion to approve it?
Um, we would need in that motion, um, so we, the other subject to, um.
It's our here, recommendation.
Oh, you got it?
Yeah. For recommendations and questions.
We move to approve the application for the repair of the dock for Candace Tanner, that one thirty-six root eight seven per recommendations and conditions as determined by element.
Yeah.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So the next is appointment resignation. Do we need to go through these that can we just do it in bulk?
We'll just, we'll need a motion to accept the resignation.
Make, um, so we need to hire somebody new.
Right, unfortunately, we lost a really great Public Works employee, a young man who's been with us five years. He was also our mechanic. And he's joined a much larger town where he'll be part of a three-year mechanic crew and have a career track up.
So it's a better position for him.
Right, it's a, it's a.
You're a stepping stone.
Yeah, well, yeah.
And that's, you have it from your little town.
Yeah, so I make a motion to approve the resignations of Michael Stewart for Public Works Maintainer and Kate Morrison, Republican Registrar. All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Replacement for Kate?
Um, we haven't.
Well, this is the year we name a registrar anyway, correct? I believe registrars are appointed or selected by the local town, the committees.
Well, they're voted on, right? I mean, so here's a vacancy, so this gets filled for the charter, right?
The vacancies, and it would go first to the Republican Town Committee for Recognition.
No, doesn't it go, it goes to the deputy? Well, she's the, no, not permanent.
So we have to look into it because this letter says that her deputy's ready to step up, but.
Well, I believe is prepared to step in as my.
So, so right now you just have an opening, so I guess you have to look at the chart.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought the deputy.
Well, to figure out.
Anyways, don't have to pick it up. Well, approve the appointment of Bill Bryant.
We need them, uh, vote on that. Approve the two resignations.
Okay, I thought we did.
We voted.
Oh, you did, sorry, sorry. Thanks, Steve.
To revote. Ask everybody to.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the resignations of Michael Stewart, Public Works Maintainer and Kate Morrison, Republican Registrar. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I make a motion to approve the appointment of Bill Bryant to Economic Development Commission, Isabel Kizwick as inland wetlands agent. And Normine Farrington to Lake Management Advisory Commission and Mike Scalise to Lake Management Advisory Commission.
So if no, the problem with doing it that way, if somebody has an opposition to one of the four that you just named, it's very difficult to do that. You lose your whole motion. I, I, just for the future, I don't have a problem with any of them. I vote yes, just for the future.
Good point, okay. Does anybody have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
But that's a good point. Um, town administrative report.
Um, just something I want to tell you, I got some good news today. For the first time I've seen this, it's a report from the governor's office on COVID and the only county with zero people in the hospital is Collin County.
Really?
Right. So we win. And then um, also is the question, Five Pack, I'll, I'll be giving Senate Bill one two zero two, uh, Five Pack had a question as to whether hybrid meetings such as we're having right now, where some people are virtual, some people are hybrid, um, are legal because the executive orders have expired, but this Senate bill, it was effective July first of two thousand twenty-one, does make this type of meeting illegal. And the only caveat is that if, if you change an in-person meeting to a remote-only meeting, you have to give forty-eight hours' notice. To come into the meeting. And I just wanted to be, be aware of that in case we have any questions.
Right. Just to know.
And then um, the Capitol Report, uh, the governor uh, made his presentation in the short session and is proposing to change the cap on automobile mill rate. It's presently at forty-five mills, down to twenty-nine mills. So at this moment, that won't affect us and in theory, even if it did, the state is talking about appropriating and offset revenue for towns that have lost.
Sure.
But, but as we see in Mercer, which is at the end of the letter, Mercer, which is the municipal revenue sharing grant, that we created a half a percent that that um, that income, the, the sales tax from that extra tax is supposed to go back to cities and towns. It's already been swept.
Imagine that.
So we, we were planning on receiving um, twenty-two point six million and then fifty-four million following year and right now they swept it. And there are no excess monies available for municipal revenue sharing.
So they weren't guaranteeing it, it was just that.
No, that's a problem. Unless you, unless you do a deal like that where you lock it in through a change in the constitution where the money does not get appropriated back by the legislative body, that's what happens.
But we haven't been relying on it, so.
There's a history of.
Every, fine, we have to put it in the budget, so.
Right.
Put a nice chunk of change in.
Then I wanted to give you some good news. We qualified again for a three-year uh, guarantee with our insurer, Karma. And it caps the worst case, so right now we're looking at um, zero percent on liability automobile property. And then a three percent cap max in the following year and three percent in the following year after that.
Workers' comp is, that's good. So we have a really good.
Right.
Reading.
So we must have, not have a lot of people that use it.
Well, last year we haven't had any big, big claims, so that's why I've gone down a little.
Right. And plus, we're very active, um, I'm actually on the Risk Management Committee of Karma and on the board and we're actively adopting all the recommendations to keep our towns from having accidents and the employees, which was, remember we wanted to war for all the football precautions we took.
Two.
So that's just good news I want to pass on.
That's it?
It's in the charter.
That's it.
And there's correspondence?
Um, I, I have, I went back, so on the registrar.
Oh.
Um, because I happen to have this in my blog. See, I've kept it for a reason. On page eighteen of the charter, it deals with it and it says we have to go by general statute, which I looked up and it's the deputy that takes over.
Yeah, that's.
Right, unless the deputy refuses.
Right.
To do so, and if they do so, then it goes to the town, back to the.
That, that's, you see, now the deputy is supposed to appoint a deputy.
Right, the deputies have power to appoint their own deputy.
And then there'll be an election. I don't know if it's this year or not, but.
It is this year.
Then there'll be an election and she could, whoever that person is could run on the report.
Oh, they, they run off-year of the town?
Yes, they run with the state. It's, it says it right.
Would that be a double deputy?
Yes, there you go. So at each state election, there shall be in, elected in accordance with section nine, one ninety and, and the Connecticut general statutes, two registrars and have two-year terms commencing Wednesday, following the first Monday of the following January. In the event of a vacancy in the Office of Registrar, voter section nine of the Connecticut general, general statute will govern that regard. And that just says, the deputy takes over and she can appoint a deputy and if she doesn't, that goes to our team.
Right.
Right, that sounds like this person needs to take action to the town court there.
Right.
To make their position.
Just so they know, we're clear.
Yeah.
It was easy enough to me.
Yeah, okay, um, budget, do we have transfers? No, no, no transfers. Refunds?
Yes.
Not a lot. Let's, one minute, I'm talking to. Is it nine hundred eighty-four?
Twenty-six cents?
I think it's three.
Three eighteen.
Three hundred eighteen eighty-seven.
Okay, we're gonna understand this part. Say, make a motion to approve three hundred eighteen eighty-seven to be refunded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The budget, right?
Paying the bill.
And you go, the eighty thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars.
And seventy-seven.
And seventy-seven cents. The refund costs a lot of money. Forty-eight dollars is part of the.
How much was that fortune? I think that was.
Budget, well, ten thousand a year for ten years.
So it's a hundred thousand dollars to do that.
No, it's not that expensive.
It's like eighty, eighty or so thousand.
Right, but we also, the, the statistical cost something after five years, so.
Okay.
Ten thousand a year.
So we gotta pay that bill. Tree worth again.
I was curious why the hotel lifeguard training is. I was curious why the hotel lifeguard training isn't more local than Milford? And was that like a two-day thing and she stayed, they stayed over or?
See, we have to, because I just saw that she probably stayed overnight, so it was probably a two-day.
Right. And was that our assistant? Anika? Yeah, so we're training our assistant rec- recruiter to actually be, be licensed to.
Oh, good training.
Do the training.
I must have missed training.
To, to train lifeguards to be our C V, really?
That's cool.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure you'd be my question. It, it's an employee of the town, not just someone, you know, part-time that could take your training a lot, so that's good.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Guess that's it?
Um, do we need an executive session?
So we have the folks.
Oh, yeah, I guess it's citizens.
A lot of, oh, sorry, audience citizens. And.
We have Ian on and Sue Epstein. I don't see hands or neither have unmuted, so I think, I think we're good.
Make a motion to close the meeting.
No. Right, we have to go to executive session.
Or number comments, no, I'm not believing this. Or number comments.
Um, I just had one. I was looking, cause I hadn't noticed, um, the committee, the, we had talked about committee committees being filled, commissions being filled, and the only thing that I found when I looked at newsletters and stuff was in December. And we had a meeting at the beginning of December. So next time in two years, we should be doing this, or in four years, we should be doing this in September or October saying the committees are up. If you're interested in, it should be done a few months earlier, not the same month that it's all being done.
I, I just had just one comment, just, just to clarify for the meeting minutes for February first, uh, my intent was to abstain just because I wasn't here, so I didn't vote on that. So I, I didn't raise my hand, I just wanted to make it clear to them that I, that I.
You actually abstained if you weren't there.
From February first, one day I, I voted in favor of February.
Okay.
Good.
Good point. Now we can adjourn.
To executive session.
Executive session.
We'll invite in, well, I recommend myself a member. Jen could. Scamper home. Is that good with the board?
Yeah, absolutely. All those in favor?
And that, where that's at eight thirty-six.
Yes, you can just pass it down.
Okay, so now it's just Stephen Everett who's in the meeting and I'm going to end recording. Recording, we've, we've come out of executive session at nine sixteen.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then you say if there's anything else in that.
If there's anything else, and if not, we will adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Let's go home.
Motion to adjourn at nine seventeen.
This is like a board of men meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, please.
Alright, good night, y'all.
So we're not meeting next Tuesday?